All systems are a go so far for tonight's SpaceX return mission that includes Starliner astronauts Sonny Williams and Butch Wilmore. They were aboard the troubled Boeing Starliner, their eight-day mission last year stretching to more than eight months stay at the International Space Station. Alan Simpson, the former senator for Wyoming dying at the age of 93. Simpson was a moderate Republican who was hawkish about government spending and he crossed the aisle often. Former central banker Mark Carney sworn in today as the new prime minister of Canada. He replaces the outgoing Justin Trudeau and says he's ready to work with President Trump on tariffs.
I look forward to speaking with President Trump. Just to be clear, I, we respect the United States. We respect President Trump. President Trump is, has put some very important issues at the top of his agenda. We understand his agenda. We understand the importance of addressing the scourge of fentanyl, which is a challenge here in Canada as well as the United States.
The last surviving American Israeli hostage now set to be released. The timing unknown.
Hamas saying it has agreed to release Adon Alexander, an American Israeli soldier who has been held in Gaza for 17 months, along with the remains of four other hostages. It's still unclear when the release will take place or what Hamas is asking for in return. Israel and Hamas have been negotiating phase two of the Gaza ceasefire that began in January.
Maybe says Anas De La Cota at the Foreign Desk. Michelle Franzen, ABC News.
Give the star in your life the brightest gift in the world. Name a star after them. This is Rocky Mazzal with International Star Registry. For $59 and a call to 800-282-3333 or visit starregistry.com, you can name a star for birthdays, weddings, or even memorials. Over 45 years, we have named millions of stars for celebrities and individuals from around the world. The star you name will be recorded in book form in the U.S. Copyright Office. Visit starregistry.com or call 800-282-3333.
News Talk 610 AM and 102.1 FM, KBNU.
4:05 now and with your KBNU news update, I'm Will Feorite as we've enjoyed some sunshine this afternoon, but it looks like it's not going to last as we head into the weekend. I'll get to that weather forecast coming up in just a minute. Well, lots of new laws came out of this year's legislative session, but one bill that didn't pass has a child welfare advocate disappointed. House Bill 83 dealt with child welfare warrants, which she said possibly could have helped prevent more situations like 12-year-old Gavin Peterson. Peterson starved to death allegedly because of neglect from his dad and stepmom, led by previous experiences with her own family. Sabrina Tracy has spoken for and led a protest in Peterson's name. She was hopeful that change would happen. This legislative session partly due to HB83, but the bill didn't pass. Now, there were other child welfare bills that did pass, but Tracy doesn't think that that will be enough. She said she's disappointed with lawmakers for not doing more. She wrote a letter and sent it to lawmakers and Governor Spencer Cox yesterday, expressing her disappointment as well as ideas on how she thinks that they can help kids in the future. Now, a hearing for Gavin's dad and stepmom is set for next week. And a 10-year-old girl was taken to the hospital after being struck by a car in Eagle Mountain yesterday. Officials confirmed that the accident occurred around 5 o'clock. The girl was taken to primary children's hospital. Now, the cause of the crash remains under investigation, but the driver of the other vehicle reportedly is cooperating with investigators. And in college basketball, Utah State have made it to the semifinals of the Mountain West Tournament after the Aggie men downed UNLV last night 70 to 58, and now face off against Colorado State, a team that just a couple weeks ago gave the Aggies one of their toughest losses of the season. Now, assistant coach last night Eric Hout, after the game, said the Aggies are going to be better prepared this time.
That's what it has to be, right? Yes, we have to play very aggressive on both ends. I feel like at their place, we were kind of on our heels to start the game and it just kind of snowballed. You know, they responded to us, you know, jumping on them early at our place. They jumped on us early at their place. You know, we'll come out, we'll prepare and we'll see what happens tomorrow night.
Now, we'll have more coming up in our pregame show beginning at 9 o'clock here on KBNU. Tipoff set for 10 o'clock and then our postgame and Aggie call at about 12:30 tomorrow morning. Well, we're going to see a mix of rain and snow headed our way for the weekend as temperatures are going to start out the weekend in the low 40s, then high 40s coming on Sunday, get back into the 50s for Monday. So we'll see kind of a mix of rain and snow on Saturday, turning into more rain on Sunday and then rain continuing into the first of next week. And news and weather this hour brought to you by Quality First Insurance. If you're confused about coverages for your employee benefit package, you need Matt Robbins. With Quality First Insurance, get more information at Q1INS.com. And I'm Will Feorite with your KBNU news update.
Hi, I'm Wendy, co-founder of Bell Sculpt. I know what it's like to feel uncomfortable in your own skin, worrying about how you look, feeling drained and just not like yourself. Hormone changes, pregnancy or aging can lead to weight gain and challenges that aren't your fault. That's why I believe so strongly in what we do at Bell Sculpt. I've had a procedure myself and it transformed more than just my shape. It boosted my energy, metabolism and confidence. If you're ready to feel like yourself again, Bell Sculpt is here to help. Book your free consultation at bellsculpt.fm.
News Talk KBNU, 610 AM and 102.1 FM.
Did you know Beehive Grill does catering? They're your best bet for quality dishes at your location. If you're a business needing a luncheon, a school wanting a tasty dinner, or a team looking for meals for an event, Beehive Pub and Grill has what you want. Call now or go to their website for more information and to set up your custom menu. Beehive Pub and Grill, your local catering source.
Get your furnace fixed, call Gary Ricks. Get your furnace fixed, call Gary Ricks. If you're having heating trouble and you need your furnace fixed, just pick up the phone and call Gary Ricks. 435-512-6633. We'll come to you. Our service fee is low, just $25. We repair all brands and have certified installers. Get your furnace fixed, call Gary Ricks. Get your furnace fixed, call Gary Ricks.
Join us each week for Music and the Spoken Word featuring the Tabernacle Choir at Temple Square, the longest-running continuous weekly network broadcasting the world. Each episode features modern and traditional arrangements of spiritual, classical and contemporary music and a timely, inspiring message. Truly an uplifting program that will have you returning each week. Music and the spoken word with the Tabernacle Choir.
Sunday mornings at 8 and again in the afternoons at 6 on News Talk KBNU. KBNU's For the People with Jason Williams and Bill Walter.
And it is Utah known as the fraud capital of the world, not because we have more people committing fraud, but because we have so many people falling for it.
Going beneath the headlines and connecting you to the newsmakers.
The radio is a great way to get the word out to a lot of people in an emergency. So we thank you for your help and being a partner with us.
For the People on News Talk KBNU, 610 AM, 102.1 FM, online at 610kvnu.com and on the KBNU mobile app.
Welcome to KBNU's For the People. It is with pleasure that I announce we're starting our show today with very special guests. I'm Jason Williams. Thank you for tuning in. Please stay tuned. We have a lot coming up today, including the For the People movie show with Andy Morgan joining us in hour two of today's show. Here in hour one, though, kicking things off from the Cache County Council. We have council members Catherine Buse and Sandy Goodlander here in the studio with us. And this is part of our ongoing effort to open our studio up to elected officials, city, county and state, and just talk about what's going on. And one thing I've noticed doing this, whether we're speaking with Logan City Mayor Holly Daines or State Representative Casey Snyder, we've never hit a point where we have people in and we say, well, here in Cache Valley, there's just nothing going on right now, so we'll skip it for this week. That is never the case. And right now, I think it's an understatement even to say very much not the case with Cache County. The growth we're dealing with, the changes we're dealing with, the legislative session that just wrapped up, and then all of the planning ahead that is going on. I just wanted to start out by saying that Cache County doesn't get enough credit for this, but whether it be the ongoing work to develop master plans for everything from trails to roads to grappling with the change in growth that's happening right around us right now, compared to some other counties I've been reading about, Cache County has done amazing job of, as best as is probably possible, keeping up on looking five, 10 years down the road. How, how do you spin all of those plates, to put it mildly?
Oh, that's a great question. And so I think what we've done well, and also there's always room for improvement, but I think one of the things that we've done well is that we're really evaluating in the budget process. We're evaluating how we want to look at our capital improvements, right? How we want to look at the large items that are coming to us, right? So this is how I can talk about as far as the county comes, right? So we're looking at what can we handle now in our budget and what's going to be coming at us in the future. And so we're evaluating that with our budget process. We're looking at it with our roads plan. What are the immediate needs? What are our needs coming at us from five years? What are our needs coming at us in 10 years? So we have each of our divisions looking at that to make sure that we're not caught unaware and we're not caught with, you know, our eyes closed and not seeing what's, what's, what's going to be happening in the future for multiple plans. I think as well, as far as, as looking ahead, I think we are trying to work together with our legislators. I mean, we're just coming out of legislative session and my hat goes off to our council chair, to Sandy Goodlander. She spent so much time to go down and work with our legislature to try to look to best lobby for our needs as a county. And we made a conscious decision about two years ago, I think it was, to not have hired lobbyists. That it was a practice that had been in place and we decided we, we didn't want to do that, that we would take that role ourselves as elected officials. And we, as a council, went down and met with our legislators and, and we gave them our opinion and what we thought would be best for the county. And I think that that helped us for long-term planning as well, that we could go and, and speak with them candidly. And we have excellent legislators that took time to speak with us and to listen to us and, and help us with, with that planning.
Cache Valley lawmakers, Senator Wilson, Representative Snyder, Peterson, Thompson even is a brand-new person there, do a great job, I think, of making sure Cache Valley doesn't get forgotten in the discussions. But there are, you know, 70-plus members of the House, nearly 30 members of the Senate. Were there times when you watched the legislative session, looking at it from the perspective as Cache County Council Chair, Council Member, where you're just thinking, no, don't do this? Or, or was it a pretty good session? Or a mix of both?
Overall, it was a pretty good session, Jason. They, our legislators are so open to our communication. And even there was one time when I was talking to Jason Thompson and I said, I really wanted to call you yesterday, but I knew how busy you were. And he, and he said to me, your call I will always pick up. He said, there's other calls that filter through with my intern. When you call me, I will answer. And so that was really comforting to know that we could be a part of that and that we could be in communication with our lawmakers when we needed to. I would say for the most part, we were very pleased with some of the bills that didn't pass, that we had hoped would not pass.
Sure.
And some of the bigger bills that were more concerning, we were able to work with our UACT partners and make some concessions to those to where they were a little more acceptable. So overall, overall, I would have to say, I think it was a pretty good session for Cache County.
Sure. This is, it's always been interesting to me, the dynamic. So the legislature will set priorities mainly through the appropriations process. And that's when, you know, representatives of counties like, like all of you down there, our state reps as well, speaking for you, speaking for cities and for residents, get a chance to try and influence things. Senator Wilson has this magic touch, it seems like, with, with getting, you know, appropriation earmarked for Cache County.
Yeah, he does.
It's really amazing to see. And that was even in his first year, he was able to do that. But that said, this all relies entirely on the county, for example, knowing what to ask for, right? And that doesn't happen by accident. It takes planning and research on your part as well, but also hearing from the cities and residents what the needs and expectations are out there. It's a lot.
It is a lot and it happens really fast. And that's part of the problem is that things are moving so quickly. There were a couple of things that we were watching that I saw were left in the Rules Committee and right up until Friday night, I thought they were going to go away. And then 9 o'clock, out it comes. And it just, it's kind of that frantic pace at the end of the session where things move very quickly. But for the most part, we were able to be a part of a lot of the things or a lot of the discussions that were going on and to be able to put our input. And it was, I just thought it was a really great session.
And obviously, transportation seemed to be kind of the dominant issue, right? When it came to the counties especially. Where are we at on all of that? I know there's so much going on right now. I mean actively so much going on. In fact, the road just, just up from the, the station here is under construction. We've got the ongoing work on, on what we all know as Valley View Highway. That, that's actually starting to take shape. You can sort of see what's going on. But we also deal a lot with roads like that highway, like Main Street Logan, where we don't necessarily have total say over what happens. And yet, the county is going to be, that's where, those are the shoulders that anything that goes wrong fall on, right? If, if, if the road planning, 10 years from now, we look back and think, oh, that was a mistake. The county gets blamed. But the county doesn't make all of the decisions. That is sort of the lay of the landscape out there. When it comes to the county right now, is there, for the, I mean, I realize the two of you don't want to speak for the council at large, but is there like a top three, top five priorities list that, that is, you know, kind of constantly being bounced around?
You know, we talked about that just the other night at our council meeting. One of the top priorities for us, for me personally, is our budget. We did have to raise taxes this year. That we have been so frugal as a council, there's a chance we may have to raise taxes again next year. And we don't take that lightly. It's, it's a really big responsibility. But to streamline that process to where we recognize the things that we have to do and that we need to do and that are worthwhile to the taxpayers. And there really isn't a lot of fluff in our budget. We, you know, I've said this before, we basically do the business of the county. We run elections, we assess properties, we collect taxes, we provide the jail, we have the prosecutors and the public defenders. You know, those are all things that are kind of a business arrangement, that we just need to make sure that they're done in a manner that uses taxpayers' money wisely. But it's not like we have, you know, that we're making programs that we're going to, to plan something. It's not like that on, on a county level of government. So that was one of my big priorities was to streamline the budget process. And also, for me personally, and I always say this in every meeting I can, we need a new senior center. Our senior center is overcrowded. It's an old building. It's not safe. So any, any type of funding or anything that, that I can see, that's going to be a priority for me.
That was, I was struck by this and it was just part of our conversation. We weren't talking about any specific plan, of course, that's been set in motion. But when we had County Executive David Zook in, and we were just kind of bantering about the need for a new senior center, which is absolutely, I don't think needs to be justified at this point, it's obvious. But also the public demand out there for something recreational as, as the Logan Rec Center closes this summer and, or closes to the public mainly this summer. And so we were just sort of bantering and he said, you know, there's the possibility of combining these two projects. And to me, that really spoke to how many, we have options. I mean, this, this all seems a bit big and overwhelming and a lot of change all at once, but we do have a lot of options. And we're far from, I'm sure, you know, solid plans, but it, it speaks to the planning again to have those options, right?
Yeah, currently we do have a feasibility study that is in its first phase. And that is underway, that is being funded by RAPS Funding. So that's the Recreation Arts Parks and Zoo. So that's a, the feasibility study is underway to see, answer, actually, it's just gathering information to know the right questions to ask. Like what exactly is the scope that the residents want for a rec center? And, and so we're, and then in the next phase, it gets into like the nitty-gritty of what is the cost associated with that? So we can see if that's something that the residents are willing to pay for. And that's, that's the ultimate question. What are people willing to pay for? We know that we want to have this for, but then you assign a dollar amount to it and that, that's where the, the rubber hits the road, right?
Yeah. That's because honestly, it, we, it's not going to be cheap.
Right, right.
But the need definitely seems to be out there. And all of this, to me, as I watch this happen, I just keep thinking, both in a positive way and, and a negative way, sometimes at once in my head, we are growing so fast. But the reality is, again, if we, if we want to shut this growth off, we have to say, you know, okay, when your kids turn 18, they've got to go live in Boise. Or, I mean, that's the reality, right? But housing does kind of come down to more of a city issue, maybe a state issue, of course. And the counties seem to sometimes get caught in the middle of all of that. The county can play a role, right?
Yeah. And you know, there were several bills, probably one of the biggest ones that was debated the most was HB 337, the land use development amendments, where they were trying to make the Beehive Development Agency. And that one came across really big and there was a lot of pushback right away because to think that there's a large state agency that's going to control development without any local control. And that bill was brought, that was a personal bill of Governor Cox. Like he wanted to, to put that together. And so I think people were careful about the pushback that they gave. But there was a lot of discussions and the legislators, the way it was originally written was amended. And at the very end of the, by the end of the legislative session, they decided to kick it to the interim and keep refining it and make sure that there is enough local control that they, that they could still have that. And there, there was some precedent to be able to have an agency like that. There are already agencies in the state, like the Inland Port Authority and the Point of the Mountain and MIDA, which does the military installations. They have a lot of broad authority already given to them that takes away from some local control. And so I think the governor's idea was to, instead of having all these pockets of different agencies with that kind of control, can we have a one agency that kind of, you know, internalizes it and, and makes it consolidated and makes them, make sure that they're all functioning the same. So on the surface, it sounded like a big overreach to all of us, but I think the, that there is some merit to it. And I think they'll, they'll really get through that during the legislative session or during the interim this next year.
And they did at least agree to amend things, even though it kind of stalled out. They, if it had passed, they were going to amend things.
Yes.
To where, okay, we do have to talk to counties and cities, right?
Yes.
Which was, I thought that should have just been in there in the first place, if you're going to give this agency so much authority to approve development. But speaking again here in the studio with Cache County Council Chair Sandy Goodlander and Vice Chair Catherine Buse about the business of the county post legislative session, also looking ahead at what's coming in the next couple of years, some of the biggest challenges facing the county. Hope you'll stick around. More to come with our guests here in the studio right after this.
Our 100th spring is right around the corner. After a long winter's sleep, the open road is calling. And Murdoch GMC Chevrolet Cadillac can help you take those curves in style. Right now, take up to $10,500 off a new 2025 Sierra 1500. When you walk through our doors, you feel like family. At Murdoch Chevrolet GMC Cadillac in Logan or online at murdochchevillagelogan.com. GMC, we are professional grade.
Call 888-391-6083 or see dealer for complete details. Offer expires 3/31/25.
Hey, business owners. Are you frustrated with your workers' comp rates? This is Matt Robbins with Quality First Insurance. As an independent auto owner's agency, we work with multiple carriers and will give you options. Our experienced agents are ready to answer your questions and help you navigate these options. Let us help you find the workers' comp policy that's right for your business. Call us today, 435-752-0101.
Did you lose your fruit tree harvest last year? Don't let pests and disease take over again. Now's the time to protect your trees with Logan Extermination's Dormant Tree Spray Services. This time-sensitive treatment stops insects, insect eggs and diseases before they start, keeping your trees healthy all season long. Logan Extermination will treat all trees and offers season-long protection packages too. Don't wait. Schedule today. Call Logan Extermination at 752-8450 at 752-8450. Logan Extermination, a division of Anderson Seed and Garden.
Hi, this is Gordon Deal. Monday on This Morning, America's first news. Vice President JD Vance is seeing his clout rise in the new Trump administration, hear the role he's playing at home and abroad. Plus, three weeks of stock market declines have investors of all kinds looking for answers should you change how or how much you invest. And the two big red flags auditors look for on our tax returns. Monday on This Morning, America's first news.
Monday morning from 4 to 6 on News Talk KBNU, 610 AM and 102 FM.
Welcome back to KBNU's For the People. Again, speaking on the show today with Council, Cache County Council Chair Sandy Goodlander and Vice Chair Catherine Buse about all things county. And I just wanted to point this out because I mentioned it casually there, but there is a, when it comes to the Cache County government in general, the website has just seen a pretty extensive revamp. And there's a cool video tour hosted by Cache County Executive David Zook. But as far as functionality goes, so the website is cachecounty.gov. That hasn't changed, but everything there now from last-minute road conditions, information, you can, there's a parcel map and summary tool viewer that you can see during the elections, of course. Election results are posted first, cachecounty.gov, even before Fox 13's Ben Winslow has them. And he's one of the fastest. There's an incident blotter for the Cache County Sheriff's Department and dispatch, trails maps, general information about the county, links to all the departments and contact information, DMV, all of that. News stories about and, and regarding Cache County, including some content that we've produced here in our newsroom. And of course, more information about the Recorder's Office for deeds, mortgages, liens, things like that. It's a really cool thing, what they've done here. And, and it's long overdue, I think, but it's cool to see it and, and check it out, especially the events calendar and things like that. If you're, if you're curious about your county government, you can see when you can engage with them in public meetings and more. And as far as the police blotter goes, just to let you know, this isn't, you know, a police blotter with photos of those arrested and all of that stuff. It's basically a last 24 hours text update of calls and dispatches for the Cache County Sheriff's Department, including, for example, this afternoon, and just as we started the show, there was a call in Providence for a fire alarm. There was an animal issue at about 4 o'clock and just things like that. Warrant was served at 3:20, but it's kind of interesting. You can, you can see how much is going on every day outside of those occasions when you hear a siren and get curious about it. So check that out. Again, the Cache County government website has seen a complete redo. It's been beefed up and everything's been consolidated into the homepage there. It's very convenient. Cachecounty.gov. I just wanted to give that a mention because I know for a lot of people, that's the easiest way to get information about their county. So cachecounty.gov again is the website. And stick around. More with our guests here again in the studio with us today. We have Chair of the Cache County Council Sandy Goodlander and Vice Chair Catherine Buse. We'll continue that conversation after this. Look at the news with KBNU's Will Feorite.
Well, thank you, Jason. A 39-year-old Providence man has been arrested for allegedly molesting a seven-year-old girl, according to law enforcement. Marshal Sean Simcox was temporarily booked into the Cache County Jail last week after a judge signed a warrant for his arrest. Now, according to the warrant affidavit, Smithfield City Police Officers received a call from a woman last December claiming her daughter had been sexually assaulted by a family member. Now, the crimes occurred several times. The alleged victim was interviewed at the Children's Justice Center in Washington City. She told investigators how Simcox had allegedly inappropriately touched her several times. Now, the incidents occurred both at her home and a relative's residence. Now, according to court records, Simcox was charged in First District Court with two counts of aggravated sexual abuse of a child, a first-degree felony. He's scheduled to be arraigned on those charges later this month. Now, Simcox is currently out of jail after posting $20,000 bond. He could face up to life in prison if convicted. Well, in addition to resuming green waste collection, coming up on Monday, Logan City officials are warning residents of other possible changes to trash and recycling collection beginning next week. Now, those changes will not impact the day of the week that collection occurs, they say, but may change the time of day that pickup occurs. Now, rather than attempting to predict the variable times and areas of the city being impacted, city officials officials are just reminding residents to assure that they have their collection containers out to the curb on their regular day for pickup no later than seven AM. Now, although there will be no formal spring clean from curbsides along Logan's streets this year, weekly green waste collection will begin on Monday and will continue through the spring, summer, and early fall, concluding on November 21st. And a Taylorsville father has been charged with beating his daughter after she was caught at school eating snacks out of a trash can because she was hungry. The 40 year old man was charged yesterday in Third District Court with aggravated child abuse, a second degree felony. Now, back in January, the man was notified by his nine year old daughter's school that the girl had been eating snacks at school, including out of the trash can and is often hungry, according to charging documents. Now, the father replied that the girl should not be getting any snacks at all. When the girl got home, her father allegedly hit her with a belt multiple times, leaving bruises, according to the charges. Now, prosecutors have requested the man be held in the Salt Lake County Jail without the possibility of posting bail pending trial. Well, it was a nice day today, but unfortunately, we've got more storms headed our way in the forecast as tonight temperatures are going to drop into the mid twenties and then tomorrow start to see a chance of some rain and snow again returning to the area as temperatures are going to top out at about forty one for our high. Little warmer weather coming for Sunday, so we'll see more rain likely. And then back into the fifties on Monday. Looks like we'll see showers continuing though through the next six days on and off. And news and weather this hour brought to you by Bell Sculpt, helping to transform your body and boost your confidence with Bell Sculpt. I'm Will Feelright with your K V N U news update.
ABC News, I'm Michelle Franzen. Concerns of a government shutdown have been averted. The final bill passing moments ago in the Senate, it comes after Democratic leader Chuck Schumer and enough Democrats backed the Republican House passed bill saying a shutdown would give President Trump and Doge more power to slash federal jobs. ABC's Jay O'Brien is on Capitol Hill.
This is an administration that already has broad designs on overhauling the federal government. And so Chuck Schumer said giving them that power of deciding who should just not show up to work at all could have serious ripple effects over the entire federal government.
It is the end of an era in Iowa, the Hawkeyes firing Fran McCaffrey after their worst season in seven years. The team losing to Illinois in the conference tournament and the Hawkeyes are sitting out the NCAA tournament for a second straight season. The Midwest and South bracing for severe storms this weekend. That all starts tonight with hurricane force winds and possible tornadoes. Michelle Franzen, ABC News.
Spring is here and it's the perfect time to get your planting started with Anderson Seed and Garden. Right now save big on bare root plants like strawberries, raspberries, and fruit trees like apple, pear, cherry, and more. Plus, brand new this year, they've got five gallon shade trees on sale just in time for spring. And don't forget to grab Fertiloom Tree and Trub Insect Drench to keep pests away. Get the best selection before they're gone at Anderson Seed and Garden, 69 West Center, Logan.
This is Branch Office Administrator Bobby Bajero bringing you the daily financial market report on behalf of Clayton McMurty and Edward Jones. Three, two, one. U S equity markets traded higher on Friday as risk of a government shutdown fell following Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer's statement that he would support the House passed bill to extend funding for the government. Leadership favored growth style sectors with information, technology, and consumer discretionary among the top performers. However, all 11 sectors of the S and P 500 finished the day higher. Overseas markets in Asia were higher overnight following an announcement that policymakers in China plan to increase support measures to stimulate consumption, providing a boost in sentiment to the region. European markets closed higher as well on news that policymakers in Germany are making progress on a deal to increase spending on infrastructure and defense to stimulate economic growth. Bond yields closed higher with the 10 year Treasury yield finishing just above the 4.3% mark, while the two year yield rose to 4.02%. Today, US equities closed higher, the Dow closed up 675 points, the Nasdaq closed up 451 points, the S and P 500 closed up 117 points. And then the bond market 10 year Treasury yields are trading at 4.32% higher by 0.05 percentage points. This has been today's financial market report brought to you on behalf of Edward Jones, member SIPC and financial advisor Clayton McMurty, serving individual investors with personalized attention and financial advice at 1309 North Main in Logan. If you would like additional information, please contact our branch office at four three five seven five three zero five three seven. Daily commentary is also located on our website at edwardjones.com.
According to Malcolm Gladwell, it takes over 10,000 hours to become an expert at something. This is Jay with Darrell's Appliance. You don't need to spend any of your valuable time figuring out appliances when you partner with us. We are Cache Valley's local appliance experts. Darrell, my dad, started this business in 1970, founded with his passion of connecting with people. We train our amazing team to carry on his passion for people and appliances. It's part of the Darrell's difference. Call for your appliance repair today. Darrell's Appliance, West on Airport Road.
Northern Utah, it's time to make your voice heard. Voting is open in the Best of Northern Utah contest presented by Alpine Cleaning and Restoration. Vote now at bestofnorthernutah.com. From your favorite restaurants to the best doctors, top mechanics to your favorite community events, you decide gold and silver winners in over 200 categories. You can vote every day in multiple categories. Vote now at bestofnorthernutah.com.
Welcome back to K V N U's For the People. Continuing our conversation here again in the studio with us today from the Cache County Council, we have Chair Sandy Goodlander and Vice Chair Catherine Buse. And we're just kind of running through everything. It would be impossible for us to create a bullet list of all the things going on in the county and just check them off. So we're trying to get as much in as we can. But I wanted to throw this out. If you have questions about county business, about road planning, about trails planning, about open space, any of these things with the open space bond program now up and running, check out the website. There are some great contact information tools and more there at cachecounty.gov. There is also a really nice resource for just general constituent services, if you will. So check it out. Full calendar of meetings and more there at cachecounty.gov. And Catherine, Sandy, again, thank you for, for taking the time to do this today. It was, starting out, Sandy and I were just joking about this during the break. But it was so cool to see, I just saw video, a lot of people posting this on social media. I saw it on a few Instagram accounts. But the state actually, the state senate was actually taking this and running with it a different way, saying, you know, we're experimenting, we're, we're taking these risks to, to, you know, recognize the future of transportation is going to look so different 10, 20 years from now. But there was kind of a, a test run, if you will, of something very cool in Logan this week.
Yes, we had at our airport on Tuesday, we had an electric airplane that landed. And it has.
That's amazing.
It was so amazing to look at it. It was so cool. And I guess you could fly to Salt Lake for $17 worth of electricity. But, but the companies.
That's very cool.
Yeah, the companies that brought it in, there's Beta Technologies and 47GE with the state. And I think that they were more of an exploratory tour, like would Cache Valley be a good fit for this program that they want to do? And the thought process is that by the time the Olympics come, that we are transporting cargo and like an air taxi to get people around without using the, the roads or the, the fuel. And.
Can you imagine going shopping at city center in Salt Lake on a, a green?
Water taxi or air taxi.
Air taxi. And, and, and the, the length of the trip about that of a helicopter flight. No traffic, no, no freeway. Yeah, I'm just excited by it.
Well, I think Utah is really innovative. They're trying to be a leader in innovation. And also Cache County has a lot of companies that could really be a good fit for that. And so I'm hoping that, you know, that we made a good showing and that, that they'll see what happens in the future. But they also are talking about a vertiport where some of these electric vehicles go up like a helicopter. So they were doing both, like airplanes and like a vertical kind of a takeoff. It was amazing to see.
Very cool.
Yeah.
And the idea of Cache County getting to be a part of this is, yeah, just selfishly, I can think of so many things I'd like about this. But it really, we, we were talking about this just earlier in the week with a report from the Kempsey Gardner Institute. They're going around talking about different counties and different economies. And they had a report on, it was mainly focused on USU's influence over Logan and Cache County's economy. But it mentioned this several times that, you know, it's very eclectic here. USU brings in all of these different, you know, research based business opportunities. And then they stay here in Cache County and, and they hire, of course, and create jobs. But this is kind of an added bonus, right? They, they sometimes break new ground and then we're right at the forefront of it. It, it's really cool to see. And yeah, fingers crossed that that air taxi thing becomes a thing one day. So sign me up for the first flight.
I know. It was awesome.
It feels so sci fi.
I know.
Right? It does. It, it is. And I think, you know, for younger generations, maybe not so much, but some of us will maybe have to get over a little bit of like, wait, this is electric? And we're going to be how high? But the technology is fascinating and amazing. And again, Cache County getting to be kind of at the center of some of this stuff is just really cool to see. I, I mentioned, you know, when we started out there, I mentioned that there are all these things going on in Cache County as we grow and change and all of that. And I, I just kind of casually mentioned the effort to preserve open space. The county, you know, this has been a multi-year project from original kind of polling the public to putting it to a vote to getting the program up and running in a way that was transparent and acceptable to the, I love this, by the way, the pickiness. And I mean that in a positive way. The pickiness of the county on programs like this is, is really, I think, a service to the programs themselves. And, and so we have this program that is, that is very tightly run. And the whole goal is to wherever the opportunity arises and whenever it's feasible, preserve open space, recognizing that, that it's going to be gobbled up pretty quickly. How are things going on that front?
Um, we would like to accept more applications. We're at the point where we have these funds available to us and we would like to accept more applications. We'd like people to come and inquire at the very least, come and inquire to see if the land that they own is, is, and they would like to be willing participants, right, in this?
Sure.
We'd like them to come and, and, and ask the questions to see if their land would be a good fit for, to have a conservation easement and to put into this program for open space, whether it be for trail easements along, you know, if they have property along a trail, a potential trail corridor, or if it's just for ag purposes for, to maintain open space, to, to maintain an ag production, or there's a myriad of reasons. But make those inquiries, go into county staff, go onto the website, make some connections, send emails and inquire to see if, if that's something that you feel passionate about and, and think that it would be a good legacy for you to have for, for open space. Go and ask those questions to see if your land would be a good fit, if it would be a good project for this open space bond funding that we've already approved as taxpayers.
Sure.
And that, that we've identified as a priority as taxpayers, that we want to have this land to be preserved as open space. And if that's something you want to have for your, for your legacy, ask questions. See if that's something that will work.
Sure. That is, you know, it's interesting when I talk to people about this, they're, most people seem to be thinking, you know, this only applies if you've got some land that might one day make a great open space park or a great, you know, and you mentioned there even easements on an area that may be an integral part of a connected trail system.
Yes, definitely.
That's a big priority for the county, right?
Yeah, yeah. Open space is, is defined in, if we look at the verbiage of the actual bond language that we used, it did include open space for trail access. So, yeah.
This is.
That's a priority.
There's actually, for listeners out there that want to know more, there is actually a great description of this and, and connection to, you know, ways you can get the process started, even just asking a question to get the process started at cachecounty.gov. And again, that open space bond initiative was approved by voters and the council and then set up and run by the councils. Had some success already, but as Catherine just mentioned, they would like more applicants. This is, the, the goal here is to, before it's gone, you know, recognize and designate areas of key open space in the county so that it's there for future generations. And, you know, I, I'm a little optimistic. I drive around the valley and I see places and I think, oh, that would be perfect. Oh, that would be perfect. The reality is that, you know, things are going to change. We're not going to be able to preserve everything. There was a, a field in the south of the valley where I used to ride my bike as a kid. I would love for that to be locked up as some sort of, you know, space for kids to ride their bikes. But it was also perfect for housing. And now it's housing. And, and that's the goal here, right, is to, to both recognize that we, we need that housing and things are going to change. But we can plan this. We can do it. We can select how this all looks and feels.
Exactly.
And by, by passing that bond, the voters said that they think it's important, too. And so it's an important thing for our valley.
Again, speaking with Council, Cache County Council Chair Sandy Goodlander and Vice Chair Catherine Buse here in the studio. And we've covered a lot of ground, but have we left anything out? Is there anything pressing that we need to make sure people know about? Or?
You know, there were a couple of bills, Jason, that I would just mention briefly. One of them was a pretty big change to voting laws. It's HB 300. There was a lot of discussion about that. And our county clerk, Bryson Bim, we asked him about it. And it's basically going to make it so that we don't automatically get a vote, a ballot in the mail. And.
You have to opt in.
You have to opt in. And I think there were a lot of people, like, I feel like there was a lot of talk that our evidence base, if you take facts and evidence based, there has not been a huge problem with our mail in voting with even with the, you know, approving signatures. And so the fact that they're making such a big change in how we get our ballots, how we give them, how we give our ballots to, how we turn them in, they changed the date before the law has always been, as long as it was postmarked before the election date.
Sure.
It was okay. Now it has to be received in hand in the auditor's office by election day. And there's no exceptions to that. So I think this bill comes into effect in 2029. They've given it four years to tinker with it a little bit, even though it passed. I think that there will be much discussion during the interim. And I think that what we end up with by 2029 may be different. But that one's going to be a big change to how we have done our elections so far. So that one, that one's kind of a big, a big deal.
And I do hope they tinker with it because I did catch the committee presentation by the sponsor in the house who couldn't answer the question simply, what problem does this solve?
Exactly.
And that made me very nervous. Whenever you hear a lawmaker say that, that, yeah, you slow that roll.
Yeah.
Utah's elections have been lauded for being so safe and so secure. So the, that's what's the, kind of the head scratcher with this. And all of the clerks, the county clerks have, have really been perplexed as to why, if it's not broke, why, why fix it?
Yeah.
And so I think that the lawmakers, I think, have been listening to them. And hopefully they will continue to listen during their interim and in the, the following years is they're the ones that are the actual, you know, the, the feet on the street, the boots on the ground that are, that are doing the, the day to day work. And hopefully they'll continue to listen to them as, and tweak this to see that, that it, that it is a good system, that we have good voter turnout as a, as a cause of the, of the mail in voting.
Sure. Also wouldn't be the first time county clerks had to save us from the legislature's
It's true.
best intentions, right?
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit before, that sometimes.
It's happened a few times.
Yeah. I think in the past, like, like 20 years ago, there was a large majority of legislators who maybe came from county councils or county, city councils, you know, mayors. And so they had a great understanding of local government. I don't know that we have a very high percentage of that now. I don't know what the numbers are exactly. But sometimes, you know, we all feel a little frustrated by some of the overreach. But I think that, I think counties in general, we have an association called the Utah Association of Counties. They are very well respected on Capitol Hill. They work with, they're willing to work with the legislators. They don't draw a hard line. And I think overall that the county's voices are, are very well accepted and heard.
That's good to hear. Very good to hear. And you, you said there were, there was another bill you wanted to quickly mention. There was.
Oh, okay. The last one that I, that wrote, written down that is, is kind of, it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. It's HB two 49, the nuclear power amendments.
Oh.
And this one, when it originally started was very scary. It created a state agency that controlled all, any power projects anywhere in the state with, again, with no local control.
Yeah.
And as it moved through the session, the UAC negotiators were able to get some more local control. And what they did too is they carved out wind and solar. So that wind and solar are still local control and that any state, any state project for like, you know, obviously nuclear power, we're not going to do in our county planning and zoning, right? We, it would have to come from a state level. But to think that they would do it without any county participation is not right either. And so I think they came to a good, a good compromise on that. And so that one did pass. And so that one did pass and I think that especially the biggest, there was one word and sometimes it's just one word. It says that the state shall negotiate with counties, not may. And so they got that one word change that, that it makes it a shall.
They have to talk to. You know, all of this is a great example of, of why it's important to have strong voices, both in our state representation, but as both of you mentioned, you know, council members having the time and the ability to go down and, and kind of serve as citizens lobbyists, for lack of a better word, where you're going down there and saying, hey, have you thought of this? Have you thought of that? It really refines the process, but also is good for taxpayers in the end because it keeps that local control, which, yeah, believe it or not, the state legislature, they, they talk a big game about that when they're campaigning for reelection, but when they're all together for 45 days, ooh, they love to centralize power. This is fascinating conversation here and, and I want to again, thank our guests, Cache County Council members, Chair of the Cache County Council Sandy Goodlander and Vice Chair Catherine Buse for coming down and talking to us today. And thank you to you both for, for taking so much time.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
We'll do it again soon and, and our listeners, thank you for being here as well. Stick around, more to come right after this.
News talk, 6:10 a.m., 102.1 FM, KVNU. It's true, many of us spend more time thinking about what's for dinner than thinking about retirement, but if you think your retirement needs deserve more attention, we agree and we like to help. We're Edward Jones. Together, we'll give your long-term retirement strategy the attention it deserves. Stop by your local Edward Jones office, one of 11 locations in Cache Valley. Edward Jones, making sense of investing. Member SIPC.
Northern Utah, it's time to make your voice heard. Voting is open in the Best of Northern Utah Contest presented by Alpine Cleaning and Restoration. Vote now at bestofnorthernutah.com. From your favorite restaurants to the best doctors, top mechanics to your favorite community events, you decide gold and silver winners in over 200 categories. You can vote every day in multiple categories. Vote now at bestofnorthernutah.com.
Best of Northern Utah.
Hi, it's Olivia Munn with my shelter pets Frankie and Chance, reminding you that when you adopt a shelter pet, you discover all the things that make them unique. Adopt pure love at theshelterpetproject.org. Brought to you by the Ad Council, the Humane Society of the United States and Matties Fund.
When you take a walk around your neighborhood and notice all the things that make it feel like home, one thing might be a little harder to notice because somewhere tucked in that neat row of houses is hunger. Over 30 million Americans don't know where their next meal is coming from. At Albertson's Companies and Safeway Foundations, we are on a mission to provide a billion meals by 2030 because everyone should be welcome at the table. Learn more at nourishingneighbors.com. Let's break the cycle of hunger together.
Welcome back to KVNU's For the People. Thanks again to our guests, Chair and Vice Chair of the Cache County Council Catherine Buse and Sandy Goodlander. We'll check in with them again and County Executive David Zook as well with a road update in a couple of weeks. So road construction update. Happy Pi Day as we wrap up hour one and prepare for the For the People movie show. We're going to be talking about Black Bag and The Day the Earth Blew Up, a Looney Tunes movie, as well as many other things. Andy Morgan joining us in just a bit. It is Pi Day. This was originally started as just kind of a joke at the Exploratorium in San Francisco by physicist Larry Shaw in 1988. And 20 years later, Congress made it an official holiday. What is Pi? Pi is a mathematical symbol slash number, the number 3.14 and then a million numbers after that, actually an infinite number of numbers after that, if you really want to get into the mathematics of it. I don't, it gives me a headache, but three, one, four, get it, March 14th is officially Pi Day here in the United States. Pi itself was named after a Greek symbol called pi, which is the, the first letter in the words periphery and perimeter and pi is the quote ratio of a circle's periphery. Pi as a mathematical number can calculate the circumference of a circle by measuring the diameter, diameter and multiplying that diameter by 3.14 plus, whatever, however far out you want to go. So happy Pi Day. Leave you all with this one, something to think about for the weekend, but kind of cool. Whales through their, let's say, discards, their, their leave-behinds, scientists believe may be the official fertilizers of the ocean. It's no secret that whale urine and feces, it contains a lot of nitrogen, which is necessary for photosynthetic processes that breed algae, bacteria, arkan, and more in the ocean that many small animals and vertebrate eat and then they become food for something else. And also that whales produce about 250 gallons of urine a day and about 45,000 metric tons of organic waste per year. But what they've found is that whales have such a large migrating pattern that they're distributing this all around the ocean. No surprise, right? But they found that because of the whales following certain water streaming patterns, it is, they're basically distributing it to areas that otherwise would be nitrogen-free and carbon-free, meaning life-free. Very cool stuff, but yeah, that's a lot of leave-behinds, right? Something to think about for, if you want to see more on this, including how they, well, tracked the whales' droppings, which is kind of cool in and of itself, using some small robotic technology. You have to see the photos or I dare you to see the photos. I've linked to them on our Facebook page. The For the People Movie Show with Andy Morgan is next here on KVNU Logan.